And truly the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Charleston Cool here.
Charles Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Wyatt here.
Pets here. And Sarah will be coming in shortly after a band concert. So we will be going through the annual organizational items first before we get into the regular meeting. So in your packet you have all of the resolutions going forward. The process will be, obviously, we go through the resolutions, we have a president, and then we'll go into the regular scheduled meetings. So we will go into Resolution 2023-13.
Can I do that?
Annual appointments of the newspaper, depositories, and auditors. Pets will make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-13.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Pets, second by Griffin, to approve Resolution 2023-13. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Election of council president. This is an annual thing we do every year as well, so we usually take a nomination, or you can volunteer yourself. You will get a second and a vote. Pets will nominate Tim Thomas.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Pets, second by Griffin, to nominate Tim Thomas. Are there any other nominations? All right, all in favor of...
Two times.
I gotta do it three times, is that a thing?
Yeah.
Are there any more nominations? Apparently I have to look up this rule.
You're asking.
Yeah, are there any more nominations? All right, seeing none. Tim, do you accept it?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, boy. All in favor of Tim's council president?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Thank you, Tim. All right, Resolution 2023-14, confirmation of mayor appointments and standing committees. As you notice, I did not change any of you, nobody asked, and so I'm leaving you right where you are. So on the sheet itself, on 14, the zoning board of appeals, those are alternates. So we unfortunately never have meetings, but in the case that we do have a meeting and somebody can't make it, then we'll have to make sure we have an alternate or at least a quorum. But it's kind of hard to get somebody to fill a position for a meeting that we never had. So as long as I've got a committee, I'm happy.
Not going with it.
Yep. Library board, we actually do have four people that are interested. I do have communication out to one of them pending an answer back, and that'll come up in May. Other than that, that is it.
Austin Cool make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14.
Wyatt's go second.
I think Wyatt got it there. Motion by Austin Cool, second by Wyatt, to approve 2023-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2023-15, fire department had their meeting and a few people moved around, so that is in your packet. I think we have to look at the employee position titles, that's our sheet, just to make sure it matches your sheet with your titles, because you kind of changed some titles around, Wes. But otherwise, it's some of the same people and a couple new ones.
Charles Cool make a motion to... Resolution 23-15 concerning the fire department appointments.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Griffin, to approve 23-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we are adjourning the organizational meeting. Do I need a motion for that? I don't think we do. We're just done. Pets make a motion to adjourn. Well, there you go.
Charles Cool, second.
There we go. Motion by Pets, second by Charlie, to adjourn the annual meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, regular scheduled business. Meeting minutes from April 6th and the closed session, which was put on your desk.
Austin Cool make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 6, 2023, open and close session.
Pets will second. Motion by Austin Cool, second by Pets, to approve the meeting minutes of April 6, open and close. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you want these closed back? Yes, please. Closed back, please. Citizen input, seeing none. Old business, seeing none. New business, 2022 audit presentation by Baker Tilly. You are off.
Thank you. Is it okay if I speak from here?
Do, yeah, because we don't have microphones anymore to worry about. We can hear you. Good.
Sounds good. Well, thanks for having me. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Justin Holman. I'm a senior manager at Baker Tilly, and I run the city's side of their financial audit. We do have a different team that does the utility side at Baker Tilly, but I'll also touch on the utility results a little bit as well. So we did issue your 2022 audit reports in final on, I believe it was Tuesday of this week, and so when we do that, we always really like to come, speak to the council, kind of give a really high-level overview of the results, as well as see if you have any questions for us. And so, a couple documents that I want to go over. You know, the first is the financials themselves. Really the only thing I want to hit on here is our auditor's opinion, which is at the start, and so we did give the city's financials a, what we call a clean or unmodified opinion, similar to prior years, so that's all good, no concerns there. The other document I wanted to briefly go over is the reporting and insights from the 2022 audit. And I would encourage everyone on the council to take a look at this. It has a lot of different stuff in it. It has, you know, describes what our responsibilities are as your auditors. It has some other required communication that we need to give, the strike of governance, which is part of the council. You know, it has any material entries that we found as part of the audit, any recommendations. There is a section that lists any internal control deficiencies that we noted as part of the audit, and so one thing I wanted to bring up about that is there are a number listed there of internal control deficiencies in the report. They're very similar to prior years, and they're also very similar to other municipalities your size, and that's because they relate mostly to segregation of duties issues, right? Where you just don't have enough people in your accounting department to kind of have what you consider the proper controls in place and checks and balances in some areas. So again, there's no real super concerning points that aren't visible or there at other municipalities your size that have limited number of employees, right? Because the city really has to perform kind of a cost-benefit analysis where it's like, is it really worth hiring another employee and paying X amount of dollars just to knock a couple of these points off the report? And again, most municipalities your size would say, no, that's not worth it. So again, nothing really super new from last year.
Well, there was one new.
Good point. There was one new point related to, I think it was...
Monthly bankruptcies.
Monthly bankruptcies.
Right.
And that had to do with the turnover that happened. You know, Mo, who left a while ago, but then with Mike then leaving, you know, I think for a while, part of the year, Mike did the bank reconciliations, and no one was reviewing them. Obviously, now that you have both Jean and Lana in place, there can be a new control set up for 2023 to make sure that... We always want to see someone's reviewing the monthly bank reconciliation.
Is it just simply that they're initialing it, signing it, dating it?
I don't believe it was, there was really a review happening, but I guess...
Okay.
We would always want, also, it's always great to have someone actually document that review, whether it's signing the monthly reconciliation or somehow not documenting it.
Yeah. Perfect.
So the next document that I really want to focus on, you know, which I call the fun stuff, is the financial results. So it looks like this. Financial highlights document, hopefully this is included in your packet. And so if you turn to page one of that, where we have the bar chart at the top, so whenever I'm assessing, you know, the financial health of municipality, I like to look at the general fund first, and specifically the general fund's fund balance at year end. So this is, you know, kind of equity that's built up over the years. Again, I like to look at the general fund because it's the main operating fund of the city, where most of the day-to-day transactions run through. And so this bar chart kind of shows your fund balance amounts at year end. The black bars are what it balances for in 2021, the light blue is 2022, and then your fund balance is broken down into different, you know, buckets. And those buckets are defined at the bottom of the page. You know, you have a little bit here that's considered non-spendable year end, that stuff, like I think there were some prepaid, some delinquent personal property taxes, again stuff that you're not expected to probably collect within a year, so it's kind of considered non-spendable, but still receivable. The next piece is your assigned fund balance, and so the city can assign funds for different things, whether it's projects, stuff like that, they're kind of saying, hey, we're going to use this money for this, and that's then considered assigned. The city can always unassign those funds as well. And kind of what's left over then is this unassigned balance rate, the biggest chunk there. And so that's, like I said, what's left over and what the city can kind of spend or not spend at your discretion. So you will see it went up about $40,000 from last year, which is good. Kind of below the bar chart, we have the summarized income statement, which again, this is specific for the general fund, but it kind of shows that your net income for the year in the general fund was about $130,000. Again, that's great to see. You actually get budgeted to use up about $56,000 of your fund balance, so you really did about $186,000 better than budget for the year. I will point out that on pages, I think it's 60 and 63 of the financial statements, there's a much more detailed budget to actual of this, kind of line-by-line item. And the main reason why you have such a big net income is because, you'll see, the public safety function was under budget by about $125,000. And I believe that, I was told that relates to, you know, a couple vacancies in the police department as far as officers, so that's why, that's the main driver of why you had that big net income during the year. So moving on to the next page. Again, this focuses around the general fund fund balance, and so one ratio that we like to calculate is we take that unassigned fund balance that you were just talking about, and we divide it by the general fund's expenditures per year. So essentially, this is saying, if you didn't take in any more revenues for 2023, how long could you kind of survive on just using that, kind of that cash, that fund balance that's been building up over the years? And so the red line on the chart is the city's ratio, and so you see at the end of 2022, it's about 63.8%. So that's pretty much saying that the city could kind of survive, again, it's not like you're going to collect revenues, but if you didn't, for about seven months, if you keep paying the bills for the general fund. So again, that's a good, high number. The blue dots are other municipalities your size in Wisconsin. So you are above that for the last couple of years. You're also above the city's, you do have a policy about what levels you want that percentage to be at. You know, it says between, ideally between 25 and 33%. You're at that 63.8%, so you're well above that. You'd much rather be well above it than below it. So again, good to see there.
I'm 19.
Not too long ago, you were at 9.8%, so it's really shot up over the last couple of years here. So we're going to move on to the next page. Another important area that we like to look at is the city's debt. And so this line chart kind of compares for actual debt outstanding to this statutory debt limitation. And so every municipality per state statutes can take out general obligation debt up to 5% of its equalized value. Again, so there's a maximum amount that you can take out. So that's the black line, is that statutory debt limitation line. The red line is how much debt the city actually has out as far as general obligation debt. And so as of 12/31/22, you've essentially used up about 31% of that debt capacity. That's pretty average compared to other municipalities your size in Wisconsin. Last year it was 27%. It did go up, you know, about 4% because the city as well as the utilities did issue some new general obligation debt during the year. But again, you're definitely in a healthy range there.
You have a comment written right in the very first line, the city does not currently have a debt payment policy.
Yep.
We don't?
We have never been historically given one. A lot of, I wouldn't say a lot, some municipalities, especially bigger municipalities, will have a management policy saying like, okay, we're never going to go above 50% of the statutory debt limit. If you have a policy, feel free to send it to me, and we can incorporate that going forward.
I'm not sure. I know we have like a fund balance policy, obviously, but I don't think we have a debt policy. And we should probably do that.
Yeah.
We'll get on it.
Okay. So then, moving on to the next page, again, this chart focuses around your debt. And so this is another ratio that we like to calculate, is essentially taking your, what were your debt service payments during the year, and it divides it by your non-capital expenditures. Essentially, this is saying, what percentage of your kind of normal operating expenses do you have to devote to pay off your debt? Because if you're using it to pay debt, then you can't use it for, you know, a police car or whatever else. And so you'll see at the end of 2022, about 18.3% of your normal expenses went to pay that debt service, which is right in line with those black dots, and those black dots are other municipalities your size in Wisconsin. So again, nothing concerning there, you're pretty much average with the other municipalities. So the last two pages here focus on the utility side. This first page is kind of a summary of the entire water and light commission. It's broken down into kind of three separate different functions. You have your electric, your water, and your sewer. And so the page after this one breaks that down, it shows your operating results broken down by each one of those. But I'm going to focus more on just the overall operating results here. So at the top of this page, you can kind of see, the red line is your operating revenues over the last, you know, five years, the black is the operating expenses. So overall, positive results where you have, you know, enough buffer room there between your revenues and your expenses, where you're having that operating income every year. You know, a little bit more specific for the electric, you know, 2022 income did decrease slightly compared to prior years, and that's because there was some increase in maintenance costs during the year. The water revenues were pretty stable, but expenses decreased in that fund because maintenance costs decreased during 2022 for that one. And then the sewer income increased over last year, and that's because there were some new sewer rates that were put into effect during the year. Below that kind of line chart is your unrestricted reserves, and so this is kind of showing the year-end balances, your unrestricted cash at the end of the year. And kind of similar to that general fund ratio, we like to calculate, you know, again, like how much cash do you have on hand, like how many months can you kind of keep paying your bills just on that? And for 2022, that calculated out to 1.32 months. Again, that was a decent increase from last year, which was 1.06 months. Again, those are, that's fairly common for utilities that, of that amount. You know, sometimes you'll see a little bit more, but definitely not concerning in any nature. Under the unrestricted reserves, you had your debt coverage, and so the utilities does have some debt, and within that debt, there's debt covenant saying, essentially, there's this ratio you need to calculate to make sure you're bringing in enough income to pay off that debt service, or 1.25 times that debt service. So within your financial statements, there's actually a page that kind of shows how this debt coverage is calculated, and it's pretty much, well, what's your net income, is that enough to pay off your debt service in the next year? So again, the minimum's at 1.25, you're actually at 3.15, so well above that debt coverage ratio, like you have done over the last five-plus years. And you know that the utility management is monitoring this debt coverage ratio because of, there's always significant capital projects happening with the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, so that can really fluctuate with the big debt that's getting taken out for that. Kind of the last piece at the bottom here is your investment in capital for the water and light commission. This is really important because these three funds are very capital asset intensive, right? And so we always like to look at, okay, what portion of your capital assets is funded still by debt, and what's funded by your equity, right, essentially paid off? And so at the end of the year, you know, 38% of the capital assets were financed through debt, 62% were financed through equity. And so kind of given the current age of your various systems, that's right in line with kind of industry standards. Again, with these huge wastewater treatment plant upgrades, that's probably going to change, we're going to have a lot more financed by debt, because there is going to be debt taken out to pay for that.
Is there a ratio for that, you know, like on these other charts? Just to kind of give us an idea when we're getting in trouble, or is it just quite obvious if we start going the opposite way?
Yeah.
More black than red?
It's, there's not, I wouldn't say there's a ratio, I'd say right now you're within industry standards where kind of how much is financed by debt versus equity, but it's just kind of the, we fully expect that there's going to be a lot, this percentage funded by debt is going to increase substantially, and that's just because you're taking out debt for all these large wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And so that's just kind of the life of it, where it's going to go to be funded a lot by debt, and then when you're paying it off each year, more and more, but it's going to go to that percentage of equity. So that's just kind of the life of it when you do these big upgrades, so not really concerning.
Nothing to get excited about?
Yeah, exactly, not, especially not when you have big projects like this on the horizon. Yep.
Unexpected.
Yep, exactly.
And that's all this really is, right? It's just some, kind of a snapshot of what's happened over the year.
Yeah.
And every year is going to be different, especially when we do a huge project.
Yeah, big projects like that will make this fluctuate, so you need to take that into point. Now, if you didn't do a big project...
Yeah, right, exactly.
And you were at 94% debt, that would be concerning.
There would be a little problem here.
Are there, that's really the high-level kind of financial results that I wanted to go over. Are there any questions from the council?
Just humor me again, I'm mad.
I'm not very funny.
It's, I guess, page six.
Oh, okay. It works.
I'll put the page, if I put the right page. The city governmental funds debt service page, where we got, you know, these big spikes.
Yep.
I, I'm not, just, can you explain it to me again, because that looks like it's a bad thing.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So why you're seeing that spike is, I believe, you know, 2020, maybe in 2021, there was some debt that was refunded. So essentially, you, you know, when interest rates were down...
Yeah.
You refunded some debt, and so you essentially got new debt to pay off old debt that was at a higher interest rate. And how we have to record that from an accounting perspective is when you do that and you pay off all that debt, it shows up as being principal paid off, even though you have all these new proceeds coming in. And so I would say that's artificially kind of inflated those in like 2020, where we had to show it as principal.
Okay.
But it was really just because you refunded debt. It was not a negative thing at all.
Okay.
But no, that is a really good question.
We did 10-3, 11-3.
10-3?
Yeah, sounds right there.
We did, we did.
All of that happened between the 2019, 2020, yeah.
Maybe there was some unpaid debt at some point, too, I can't, I can't recall, but again, yeah, there was nothing concerning with that, but I can see why it is.
Yeah.
Any questions?
A bad, right.
No, all good.
Anybody else have any questions?
Questions? My contact information, everything is in the reporting and insights document, you know, if you ever have any questions, email or phone, everything is, is in there.
Questions? That is it? All right. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we will let Justin go home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you didn't scare Lana away, she's still here.
I'm worried about that. I'll see you in a year from now.
You will see.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ordinance 2023-07. So part of the madness of doing some of this reorg stuff is going through and making sure everything is the way it's supposed to be. So I kind of cleaned up some things that have been lacking in our ordinances for a while. So some of this is just state statute stuff that I put in here, but just kind of gives a little bit more explanation, because 85-1, that's, it didn't say anything, it just, you know, the mayor, like, okay. Then we updated the appointed officials section, made sure these things were to ordinance and to code. Biggest one was cleaning up the librarian as well, just making sure that people understand library board is appointed by us, confirmed by council, and they are responsible for the actual librarian. We haven't had a dance hall inspector in quite some time.
Like, how long?
I think it was the 70s.
On the time.
Yes, I was in that room dating.
80s.
And there was one in 80s. Was there some facility, like 70?
Sure, did I have Jim Maitner?
Jim Maitner, yeah. I was...
Jim, Jim and Vern.
Yeah, that was interesting. So yeah, that's been gone for very, very long time.
We need that.
Am I coming back? We'll appoint Gabe. So anyway, so this particular ordinance, and for some, this is what happened with 85-7. So when we did all the updating to change things from, you know, clerk treasurer to clerk deputy and all that stuff, and then we actually created this treasury position, there was also another ordinance at the same time where we added the item where it's in black where it says appointment, the finance, well, the left, we added the appointment process in there. When Ecode got it, because it was in the same code, they took it as we rewrote this section H, and just took it all out. So it took us a little bit to kind of figure out what happened, but that's why this is back in, this is exactly what it was before, but because Ecode didn't put it in, because they thought we took it out, now we got to put it back in again. So, I know, interesting, right? Yeah, otherwise, we've already passed it, but, so really, the only updates we did is just adding more teeth to section A and cleaned up 85-3.
Cool, Charles Cool make a motion to accept updates to the policies as outlining ordinance 2023-07.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Austin Cool, to approve 2023-07, 85 updates. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2023-08, this was another one that's been kind of in a couple of different places. So all we did in here is just simply state that the practice of filling the position, you fill out this form 30-8, which has always been there, but if you look at 30-8, it also had an entire section asking for a resume. We don't ask for a resume in the actual ordinance, but we... We don't ask for a resume in the actual ordinance, but we had it on the form. So anytime somebody would come in to fill an open position that wasn't during an election, we required them to give us a resume. So being that the ordinance itself never asked for that and we don't see why you need it because when you want for election, you don't have to fill out a resume either. You just made the ordinance match the application or the application match the ordinance is what I should say.
Pet will make the motion to accept ordinance 2023-08.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Petz, second by Cummings to approve 2023-08. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, 23-09, 30-6, standing committees. All I did on this one, and yes, I do this on the weekends. Chapter 35 is the CDA. I never liked how this.
I have copies of it if anybody wants to see it. I didn't include it in the package.
Yeah. The chapter 35 was created when we took out the CDA, the CDC, right? Community Development Authority, Community Development Committee. We combined them into one committee. So all it did is just look like we took the community development away. It should have always stated, see this chapter because we do still have it, but it doesn't, it's no longer a standing committee, but yet Alders are assigned to it. So I just wanted it for future reference for people after me to know what went on. Just clarification and that insurance committee is the responsibility of the treasurer, not the clerk to attend the meetings. Which?
Pet will make a motion to accept 2023-09.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Petz, second by Cummings to approve ordinance 2023-09. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And then I gave Tim homework, so he'll be working on 53. Yeah. All right, Town of Waterloo EMS contract. Tim?
Monday, Jeremy Ellis from the Town of Waterloo contacted the mayor and I, in reference to EMS service, in the portion of the Town of Waterloo that is currently handled by Lake Mills EMS, at Lake Mills EMS will be discontinued, what, July 1st?
June.
It's been a June.
And the city of Lake Mills is hiring Ryan Brothers for their ambulance service. The Town of Waterloo had contacted us last year about the possibility to see if the city would be willing to pick up that additional section of the Town of Waterloo and provide EMS services only. We provide EMS and fire services to a portion of the Town of Waterloo, but not EMS service to the entire township. So they're requesting that we pick up the area that we do not currently service for a three-year period. And he's going back to his board in May to finalize their decisions there. I talked with Wes and their fire department and they are willing to. There was a contract that was written last year to authorize them to service that area that the council did approve. And fees have already been associated with, but we feel there probably needs to be an addendum to the current contract for the three-year period. The fire department says that they can service this additional area. I think Jeremy said it was about 313 residents, additional residents is what Waterloo EMS would be picking up. Would be somewhere in that number. So this came before finance and finance is recommending the council to service the remainder of the Town of Waterloo. And did we say a three-year period or?
Three.
For a three-year period. And I'm going to recommend to the council approval, I'll make that motion to approve the additional service to the Town of Waterloo.
Are we doing the amendment? We are still having to write up the amendment for it?
I think to identify the three-year periods.
Right, okay, right.
Everything else is determined.
Because everybody else is on a calendar year and this one we're picking up in effect of July 1st and they want it for three years. So this will get clarified in the May meeting and then we'll, we'll see the contract come back.
We'll see the final contract.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion if we're going to wait for the final contract?
I don't think so. I think that's what we had talked about.
I think we're agreeing to, I guess that's the only thing we have to. We are agreeing to pick up the three-year of debt coverage. And I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Tim Thomas, second by Austin Cool to agree to accept the Town of Waterloo in our EMS contract. Now, will we get a new cute little colored map showing?
One of the things with Town of Waterloo is going to have to do is they're going to have to notify the county.
Yep, because they're, they're the ones that do the maps.
Do the maps.
Your Mavis or whatever that stuff.
So on that map, the yellow lines, I think that go through like the green areas were the additional areas that we're going to be picking up.
That's kind of our boundary.
That'll be the boundary. That's the, that's the township. Our territory we cover right now, I think, is in purple.
Yeah.
So we're basically picking up all the way down to that yellow line.
Yeah.
So not quite to the interstate on Newville Road.
Right.
And then I think there's a couple of residents off of Mansky Road to, I can't think of the name of the road, but there's a couple of residents out there.
It's a Pershtey.
What is it?
It says it, it's a Pershtey, P E R.
I don't know.
It doesn't matter, but you'll, you'll highlight.
Yeah. Mansky, and then there's a road that comes off there, Mansky is kind of where the cutoff is. Fayetteville, so. Yeah, Fayetteville. So there's like three or four residents that are on Fayetteville Road that would be in the Town of Waterloo.
So we're going to have part of the interstate again then?
Well, it's like a two-mile stretch from Lake Mills, I think Airport Road to the county line.
Yeah. And that's what they're determining because we can't get there in time. So it's probably going to end up being picked up by Ryan Brothers. So that's what, that's what Waterloo, that's why once this map gets updated, it'll be clear whose lines go where. Yeah.
Because the rest, the rest of the interstate will be serviced by somebody else.
Great.
All right. All in favor of accepting Town of Waterloo into our EMS?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carried. Contract accomplished. A little late on that. All right, meeting minutes summary since the last council meeting, finance, Tim?
I'm going to take both for me, don't I? April 13th, we had a special meeting with the library board and that was to go over finances, to discuss items of mutual interest to develop a better working relationship between the two bodies. Tonight's meeting, pretty much everything is on the council agenda.
All right, thank you. CDA?
We got some updates from non-metro connections, just kind of high level overview. Talked about revolving loan fund potential. So we'll have some more information on our next meeting on that.
And we have a full board finally.
Yep.
So.
Lots of people.
Lots of good stuff to work.
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Consent agenda items are in your packet. If there are any questions?
Pet will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Petz, second by Cummings to approve consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Meeting right on. Public health and safety. Ordinance 2023-06, the UTV ATV hour update. Tim?
The safety committee received a request to extend the hours, which were currently from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Extend those hours to meet neighboring communities, neighboring areas. Quite a bit of discussion on the committee concerning those hours. Most of the communities surrounding us, with the exception of Dodge County and actually the Town of Portland, their hours start at 5:00 AM and either end at 10:00 or 11:00 PM. Dodge County's hours end at midnight, start at 5:00 AM, go to midnight. And I do believe the Town of Portland has no conditions, no restrictions on hours.
Correct.
After much discussion, the committee came to a consensus of changing the hours from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And that was part of, that was based on the recommendation of the chief. We requested that if we do change the hours, that we try and match those surrounding us. And.
What is the state statutes?
There is no, there is nothing in state statute.
Because I thought when we, when we created this, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I didn't know them before. But when we created this, we created it with the intention of mirroring state statute, not.
For the most part, we did, but there is nothing in there for hours.
Well, because the state statute doesn't have hours.
Right.
So I thought that's what we had decided, like to mirror that.
No.
No, the state doesn't have any hours. That's, that's what we came up with.
So why do we have hours? I'm just curious.
When we were originally approached by the group wanting to gain access to the city, these are the hours they presented. And it was just to gain a foothold in the city. But this was what, those hours pretty much are the whole ordinance was written by the ATV group.
Do we need hours? I mean, what's the purpose? Do we know? Who's, are you on the ATV club?
I am.
Well, what is the purpose of having hours?
The original idea behind it was because we were the first city in this four county area to open up a whole city. And it was a selling point is to have a curfew. As you said, township of Portland was the first township in this area to get it. And they don't have any restrictions at all. So I think it was more of a selling point. Does it stand true that it's an issue? I don't know. You know, like you said, the state didn't put any restrictions on it when they were looking at it. So it's purely up to each municipality what they want to do.
Do we have issues?
Not with the current hours.
Not, not per se. I mean, we've, we've had issues, but if you figured out, okay, how many are being used and the times that they're being used, it hasn't been an issue. I mean, whatever you have, whether it's bicycles or motorcycles, you're always going to have a certain percentage of people that aren't going to follow the rules.
Right, right.
But it's not, it hasn't been overwhelming.
I think it's also interesting to note that all the counties around us have hours. So we would become an island if we didn't have hours.
Except Portland has no hours.
Right.
But Portland also has Dodge County and Dodge County has hours.
They do.
Yes, they do. On the county highways. So for them to go into the Town of Portland, they can go drive around in Portland proper, but the minute they get high, they're under hours. They can't go on high because they're restricted by hours. There is no place around here you can go and not have hours. That are open 24 hours that don't have restrictions. Dean County has restrictions. Jefferson County has restrictions. Dodge County just happens to be midnight. I think Dean County, Dean County and Jefferson County are 10 and 11? And one's 10, one's 11?
And once again, counties in the northern part of the state and other western part of the state don't have curfew restrictions in. So once again, most of this is brought by the council to work with the counties as a selling point to get it passed.
And I voiced my concern in the meeting is any second shifts? I mean, my company takes care of Sussex, so I know how many people are there and how many are on second shift. And that is a lot of people. That's a very large company.
And trucks still has shifts too.
And they do, so.
And I mean, these vehicles still have to have like all safety equipment. So it's just like a car. I think it would be, like, I'm sorry, I never even knew that we put like times on it.
I didn't either.
I honestly, I didn't absorb it or I just, it was a piece of it that I just didn't even think about. But I mean, it would be like really putting, for a lot of people now that they're used to it, it'd be like putting hours on when you can drive your car. You know, I mean, that's just kind of how I look at it. Because when it's within a city, it's not purely recreational, right? It's to get around. It's their form of transportation. And it's different if they're going down on the trails or going up to Clark County. But I, I just don't know why it would be a time limit. I would think it would be easier for the P E and for everybody just not to have any hours. Because I'm serious, I really thought that, I was shocked to hear this.
And I would disagree with that just because then we would be an island. Again, they can't go out into Dodge County. They can't go into Jefferson County. They can't even go into Dean County.
No, they could.
Portland.
We were, we were an island once before.
I mean, the state just finally approved them, we enabled operating, they waited.
Yeah, but you know, we're a transcenter.
That's what I think. I think a lot of people will, they will.
They followed us last time.
They will follow us.
I mean, Lake Mills, Marshall, right? Like, everybody is.
It started as an island.
It started as an island.
It started as an island.
I mean, I, I just don't.
I am not for changing it, making it with no restriction. The, it, there was a lot of discussion at the committee level. Ron didn't want to change the hours. I was a big fan, but I agreed to 5:00 AM to 11:00. Sarah wanted to go to midnight.
Well, that's what I was just going to ask, is that, does the 11:00 or midnight tie into shift changes?
Well, it does. And I guess we use 11:00 because that's what Jefferson and Dodge County are. Aren't Jefferson and Dean County are.
Okay.
The Town of Medina is 10 o'clock.
I want to change its time. Or Tim, I didn't want 5:00 AM.
You didn't want 5:00 AM.
When Sussex, the second shift gets done at 11:00.
Yeah.
Typically, that's what your second shift is at 11:00. So if they did take that in, they would not be able to drive it home. Correct. So they don't, they would not have that option.
I mean, if we're having minimal problems with DVDs.
I don't think there's going to be any problem like that. I don't think people are going to be like, okay, let's go.
I could run many one of our paths.
But that's just me, that's just me. Like I told Tim, I'm like, I'm in the younger generation and I, I don't foresee it. I have a family.
I could go to midnight for shift change.
Young kids.
Just open up the city as an island when the only place you can run them is in the city. I'm not a big fan. I talked to.
And Portland.
People.
To the bars.
Wow, hold, three whole streets in Portland. The only place you can go in Portland is the bars.
Right, yeah.
I don't know, I could be going to my Portland wine, but as I was coming.
I'm not for extending it past midnight just because you can't go anywhere other than the city. When I talked to people, in my word, it was interesting comments. Some were upset that we allowed them, period. Some didn't want to see any change, any, any time changes. I mean, it's interesting. I still got people that are upset we allowed them in the first place.
I heard none.
Did you say, did you say you would be fine moving it to midnight?
I could go to midnight. I would extend it to midnight to get that passed, yes. Ron, I know, prefers 6:00 AM versus 5:00 AM. Ron, I know, prefers 6:00 a.m. versus 5:00 a.m. And I can understand that also.
And I prefer just taking it off.
When your primary people are looking for a shift, you give them some time to sleep in it.
I mean, they love hours.
But the noise is not going to be any different than a motorcycle. And we are not, we're not putting on motorcycle restrictions that you can't rev your motorcycle at 4:00 a.m. to go to work. I mean, I hear every single morning, there's a guy, he's a police officer, he's retired. And I can hear him every morning, 4:30. It's just the nature of having.
Come to my house in Portland.
I just, I don't know.
So having said all of that, I'm going to recommend that we change the ordinance. Sorry, Ron, I'm going to go with 5:00 a.m. And I'm going to give in to Sarah and go to midnight.
Give me a second. Is that a motion?
I'm making that motion, yes.
Okay. Anybody want to second that motion?
It's very surprising.
All right, so then does the motion die? Do we?
The motion dies.
Do we, can't we make another motion? Somebody else?
The motion dies and it's, we're just going to have to make another motion.
I would like to make a motion for ordinance 2023-06 to eliminate all of the hours and let it be wide open like Portland.
You can't go anywhere in Portland.
Bars. Kobe's my friend.
You can go to the bars. Naturally, there's a reason to change the time limits so they can drive them to the bars. However, I don't agree with that at all.
Have a problem with Portland.
I don't even own, I don't even own a UTV or an ATV. I'm just saying, I just, can we go with no restrictions? And if it becomes an issue?
Well, we have a motion on the table now.
Yep. I'm saying if it gets approved that there are no restrictions and chief comes to us and says there's it, it's a huge issue.
You can always change.
And we got to revisit this and we got to fix it. I mean.
No different than the conversation we had last meeting with the McKay row.
We do with ordinances.
Yeah, this is what we do.
Almost every month.
They can be changed. They can be amended. So right now, we have a motion from Petz to eliminate all hours. Do I have a second?
Wired will second.
Motion by Petz, second by Wired to change resolution 2023-16 to eliminate the hours.
I think it's 06.
Yeah. Oh, it does say 16 on here. No, you're right. We have a typo on the thing.
It says 16 on here, but this says 06. No, right here. We're on this one.
Oh, we're on the contract. I'm writing my notes on the wrong spot. Look at that.
I have to talk to somebody.
I know. Keep an eye on me. Appreciate that. So it is 06. Yeah, 16 is down further. I'm sorry. So I have a motion and a second. No other questions? Roll call. I know, I know.
I'm the first one too.
Yep. Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, no.
Thomas, no.
Wired, yes.
Petz, yes.
Motion carried. All right, finance insurance personnel, Tim, financial statements.
Thomas, make a motion to approve the general disbursements in the amount of $346,717.18 payroll in the amount of $78,518.07 and the clerk treasurers report, which is on file in City Hall.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Cummings to approve March financial statements. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Petz, yes.
Motion carried. City Hall shredding bids. We are going to shred them. You want to take it, Tim, or you want Jean to? Or we can make a run at speed.
We can make her. We can make her.
Did you want to take it, Lon?
Actually, I forgot. This spreadsheet in front of you is just giving you the three different quotes that we received on shredding. We have a lot of documents between the police department and City Hall. But yeah, if you come up the back way, you'll see all those canisters back there. So during the research that Sarah and Jean did, it went through. Right now, we will have probably nine bids, correct, Jean?
Yeah, we have a good six now, solid. Please, one is two and we have four, so we have more to put in.
In the finance meeting, we recommended Pelletary's because again, down in the notes below, there's some worst-case scenarios. We think we can get the cost lower. Jenny's familiar with them as well, but it's not much difference. The biggest thing is that it comes down to the company ratings, Better Business Bureau, longevity, just the trust with the documents. So I'm recommending, I think Jean is, as well as Pelletary's, but it's up to you guys with that. But it needs to be done. We have a lot. We haven't even gone through yet.
Weren't you guys going to bring in Lois to like monitor it too or something?
She's going to look at it, but a lot of the stuff has been dumped in the big bucket. So I'm not sure she's going to crawl through all those.
Well, I just wasn't sure because I thought you made a comment about having some sort of.
Yeah, we had dumped some just to see, like, so we were trying to get a grasp of what we have. Because they're like, well, little boxes, big boxes. And we're like, finally said, check, can you bring me up some totes? Because I have no idea what this, how much is this bill for.
This actually will help us probably save money just because, you know, the worst-case scenario, the higher amount is having those totes there. And wheels, it'll be easier for them to empty them out so that probably save us money.
And try them?
Yeah. They're supposed to dispose of on-site, but I mean, most of them do. They'll destroy the.
Yeah, it was more for on-site in some of the situations, as you probably have known on here, so.
Charles Cool, make a motion to award the shredding contract to Pelletary.
Cummings, second. Okay, we'll give that to Petz. Motion by Cummings, excuse me. Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Petz to award the shredding bids to Pelletary. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Earl Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Petz, yes.
Motion carried. Now to the right resolution, 2023-16 awarding Waterloo Road contract. Probably have that in your packet. Waterloo Road, Richard, do you want to take it? Do you want me to take it?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So the bid came in lower than originally estimated, which is a good thing. And this particular company, Karp Tetchner, because I can never say that. Has been here before. Fortunately, we have some grants that go with this and we're splitting some of the funds with the town of Waterloo. So we should be under budget. But just so that people understand that that 43950 does not include roughly $50,000 of design and inspection and all that other stuff. So that's, that's not the total. Add another 50 to it, so it's really 480.
That was already approved, right?
Pardon me?
The design stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that always happens first, so we already paid for it. But you know, just, just the overall picture of the actual project, it isn't just the 430.
And this is the one that had the problem with the grant, right?
Yep.
Yes, yes. But we still came under and town of Waterloo is putting in about 150. So it works out good.
Petz will make a motion to approve resolution 2023-16.
Wired will second.
Motion by Petz, second by Wired to approve 2023-16 awarding contract to Karp Tetchner. I'm just going to say Kay. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Petz, yes.
Motion carried. All right, any future agenda items and announcements? We didn't have our calendar on here, did we? Calendar is in here this week.
Yes, sorry.
Pretty sure stuff's going on in there, I did.
Just, you know, I want to.
Tim is the president.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to throw you in, but I can't really see that.
I said I was going to miss and I said, because unless you're going to try to buy president, I said, well, is Tim going to be? And she said, yeah. I'm like, I should have just like said I was going. I basically said.
If I can, I got one item. Everybody should have a sheet on incident command. Just for everybody's information, all elected officials required to take incident command 100 and 700. It's important that you do that because some federal funding is tied to.
But there's no.
That says elected officials right on the.
No, no, but there's no like website that's tied.
Send out, go make sure you get the information.
Yeah, I got the website. It's like one train something.
So there's, yeah, just, we'll, you can give it to Jeanie. You have it, just launch it to everybody.
What is she going to stand?
Who's anything?
Incident. Oh, incident. It's not incident.
Our thing is you have to have more than the 100, 700.
I've already got 100 all the way through 800. Electoral officials.
He's got us covered.
Electoral officials.
You mean, you got us, Tim. We could have been good.
Charlie, Mr.?
You have it done too? No, okay, you could have done it, Charlie.
Thanks.
I appreciate it, Charlie. Just one thing. Mark, any?
The OC is.
We'll get you the website. You should be able to peruse it that way.
Just with the ordinance change, I will not have that written up until tomorrow. And so that means Jenny will sign it next week. That means it won't go into effect until the ordinance is in the paper the next Thursday. So I just want anybody to think it changed immediately. Yes, be posted in the paper, so.
So if they see it in the paper?
Once it's published in the paper, which will be in a couple of Thursdays, it'll be the, it'll be good then. But it's not until it's published.
A week from today?
Yeah.
Or two weeks.
No, because if I get it in tomorrow, it would be, it would be in next week's paper, but I'm not going to get it in tomorrow. I'll have Jenny sign it tomorrow and so it'll be the Thursday after. So in two, two Thursdays, two weeks from yesterday.
The other change for Canal Road, have those been published?
Change for Canal Road.
Those have already been done.
Have they been published?
Those were in the original ordinance. We're just waiting for the DOT to sign.
If they were in the original one, then, then.
Those were already.
Once it was approved by the state.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. What is, I don't know.
Yeah, do you want to just put a date? So next Thursday, go ahead.
So today is the 20th, 20th. So I'll put it in the paper. It'll go in the paper. I'll give it to them on the 28th and that means it's published on the 4th. May.
May 4th.
You said May 4th.
Yeah, well, if you want it to be May 20th.
No, you said May 4th.
No, you said today's the 20th.
Right.
I can do May 20th if you want.
Just make it June 20th.
Motion to adjourn.
Petz, a second. Motion by Charlie, second by Petz to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So I'll just have you know.